The whole truth.
To help me, God.
So help me, God.
Thank you very much. Honorable Minority Leader and Honorable Atu Fosin, the ranking member on finance, you are aware that this is a referral from Mr. Speaker pursuant to order 1061 of the standing orders of this House. You are also aware that on the 10th day of November, that is Thursday, November 10, 2022, the Honorable Minority Leader did move his motion before the House. And that is the same motion that has been referred to us. It is reported in the Hansat at paragraph 83 of the Hansat of that day. Your duty here is to lead evidence before the committee in respect of each of the grounds stipulated in your motion. And so I will give you the opportunity, I mean, the chairs will give you the opportunity to execute that duty. I'm told that the Honorable Minority Leader will first make a statement and then the Honorable Atu Fosin will then proceed with leading the evidence in support of each of the grounds. So.
Thank you very much. Chairman, if I have your indulgence, understand that I would like to proceed by tendering in parliamentary debate official report of 10th November 22 in evidence, which is the motion I move, which was able to seconded by the whip, the Honorable Muntaka, expecting full debate. And Chairman, as I said, we are dissatisfied with the performance of the Honorable Minister for Finance, and we think that he is not competent enough to continue to hold office as Ghana's minister responsible for Finance because, Chairman, as we have said, so since I took counsel on Groz, Groz means money member of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasion and told.
No, wait a minute.
And I'm presented hardship. I'm just taking one.
Sorry, what are you doing now? Go on, it's settled.
Honorable Minority Leader, may you proceed?
So Chairman, we have grounds, and grounds, I'll just take two and yield the floor to the Honorable Minister, Honorable Atu Fosin. And as I said, let me start with National Cathedral. I mean, Ghana, very respected religious country where there is coexistence, both Muslims and Christians alike. Nobody is against the President promising and honoring God with a cathedral for the purpose of the expression of the Christian faith. But when public resources is used for that purpose, it needs us to call into question. So the clerk of the committee, I just gave you a warrant signed by the Honorable Minister for Finance for some amount of money for the cathedral. And that's what you are holding, the first document, just give me that. So I'll tender this in evidence and say that we are aware that by a warrant signed by Honorable Kenofur Yata Minister 29th October 2022, an expenditure of 1,42,762,500 Ghana cedis was allocated for the construction of the cathedral. Want to know when parliamentary approval was granted for this purpose? And then also I refer to the Auditor, the Auditor General's report. And Chairman, when we see, for instance, I just picked two, as I said, I yield to the Honorable Atu Fosin, fiscal recklessness. Today, what is Ghana's national debt position? We have been told by the World Bank and IMF that our national debt stock exceeds 450 billion Ghana cedis. As was inherited in 2017, it was 120 billion Ghana cedis. Servicing debt, the amount of money we now spend as a country to service debt at end of year 2021 was 37 billion Ghana cedis, ballooning to 45 billion estimated by close of this year. This can only be as a result of irresponsible borrowing. You have borrowed.
So where are we getting all these figures? You rented a few figures here, where are we getting them from?
The minister's own statement and then from the World Bank.
They are there when we go.
Yes, yes, yes. However, the World Bank even says that by end of this year, GDP was likely to be 99% of GDP. So I yield that. I just end here, the Honorable Atu Fosin.
May I come in? And, Mr. Chair, I would be grateful if I could be directed on what of the points is he's picking on? Because I.
Turn this on. We keep on pleading, we wouldn't allow this meeting to degenerate. It wouldn't be fair, it would be fair. You should catch the attention of the chair, raise the point, let's be clear that we know what we are going to, going to raise. We can't be cutting across like that. We discussed all of this yesterday, it can't be right.
And honorable members, please allow the proponents of the motion to flow and then note down any critical questions that you want to ask them. Okay? So please.
Mr. Coach Chairman, I, Harun, I thought that you were starting with the National Cathedral. Have you finished with it and moved away from that?
Yeah, I'm done.
You're done with the National Cathedral?
Yes, yes, I've given you my evidence on that.
That is the document that you threw.
Yes, yes. And Chairman on hardship, I'm sure you are. You buy fish.
I don't buy food well, so don't talk about it. I don't buy food. I don't have a car, I don't buy food.
When we are led here that there is excruciating hardships and people's real income have been washed away by inflation. And Chairman, Chairman, I'm on inflation. And on inflation, I'm not quoting any person but the President of the Republic on his Sunday address to the country, when the President himself stated, and Chairman, with your indulgence, I quote, "The whole world has been taken aback by the speed with which inflation has eaten away people's incomes. Economies big and small have experienced over this year alone the highest rise in cost of living over a generation, the highest rise in government borrowing, highest rise in government borrowing. These are the worst of President Nana Dudankwa Okufuado. In over 50 years, the highest rise in inflation for 40 years. This inflation has contributed to the unacceptable hardships that Ghanaians are going through. And we are holding the Honorable Minister for Finance holy and solely responsible for that, the worst of the present." I continue. "The steepest depreciation in their currency to the US dollar in 30 years, 2017, 1 US dollar was to 4.2 Ghana cedis. Today, 1 US dollar is 15 Ghana cedis. That has meaning for businesses in Ghana. The cost of doing business is unacceptably high for businesses. The pharmaceutical industry is complaining because it affects their imports and they are made to pay more. The depreciation of the city has affected even Maokala women who cannot trade effectively because they've had to lose. And lose because this is a consequence of their borrowing. Also, you now have what we call, as we reference Bank of Ghana Act, the Bank of Ghana has exceeded its emergency support and financing for government for 2019, 2021, 2022, who lead the exact figures. But the law, the Bank of Ghana Act, Chairman, that I may refer to, says that the minister is allowed to do up to 10% of previous year revenue. It's 5%. I'm generous to even give them 10%. So if you have 90 billion, 5% of it would have given you 4.5 billion. So if you spent up to 9.5 billion, or even you spend up to 15.9 billion, that is in breach of the Ghana, Bank of Ghana Act. And that itself is contributing to the increase in inflation, which is affecting real incomes." So Chairman, let me at this point thank you for appearing, as I quote, "the Auditor General report." And you see, we are saying that the minister must give us data to rely on. And I'm holding here the report of the Auditor General of the Public Accounts of Ghana, General Government for the Year and the 31st December 2021. And I refer to page 10, paragraph on annual budget funding amount, reported by the Ministry of Finance itself, amounts to 2,061,122,607, whereas Controller Accounting General reported an amount of 3.3 billion. So a variance of 1.3 billion. Somebody must explain this to the Ghanaian public, why you have this discrepancy.
This is in respect of which one?
Annual budget funding amount, A, B, F, A.
No, that's in relation to which of the.
Paragraph 23, paragraph 23, paragraph 23. Who observed significant differences in the revenue figures reported by the Controller Accounting General.
No, this is in support of which of the, I called them allegations. I think Coach Chairman says we shouldn't say allegations. Which one, which of the numbered?
Number four, and there I yield to the Honorable Atu Fosin, deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. So when you have him say 2 billion, Controller says 3 billion, who are we to believe? Then the Honorable Atu Fosin will come in and show you a graph to expand shit more on four. So I yield to Atu Fosin. I'll come back again. I've referred to the Auditor General's report, I've made comment, and then prices of goose, you said when you didn't buy anything.
You bought the petrol for me, don't worry. You bought anything in my cars. You didn't buy, don't worry, you bought it for me.
Okay, the Honorable Atu Fosin, can we, may we hear you?
Thank you very much.
Counsel, you have an objection?
Yes, Mrs. Chairman, the list that have been provided does not include the Auditor General's report. And this is the danger that we pointed out. If we are not careful, there will be surprises at every turn of these proceedings. And as we sit here, the Finance Minister of the Republic, to be working on the budget, to be negotiating on the IMF program that the whole country. And if we're going to stay here and spring surprises at every turn, Mrs. Chairman, it may be difficult for us.
Honorable Counsel, Honorable Counsel, the Honorable Minority Leader did mention the Auditor General's report. I think it is, I mean, in the typing that there was an omission. It was mentioned to, it was mentioned to the committee. So please, your, yes.
Chairman, I have a concern. And if the counsel to the Finance Minister can give me his ear, the counsel to the Finance Minister, I don't know if you heard him, has been telling us that the Finance Minister has work to do, he has to lead IMF negotiations, prepare the budget, as though what is going on here is not important. Some of us take strong, strong exception. This is an important constitutional assignment, very important to Parliament and to the Ghanaian people. I think that such, such expressions, with all due respect, very condescending and as though, as though we are wasting their time. Totally unacceptable.
Do I take it that that comment was posited in a specific contest? I thought what he meant was that by maybe suggesting that we should go on the front leg of their, their own to look for all this, why not stick us to the specific? But we pointed it out to him that, well, I maybe.
No, Mr. Chairman, this is a very important national exercise.
Can I conclude? Yes, he thought that you directed him to go out of the box, out of the contest, but we think we indicated to him that, we wrote it down, I have it as a number five. So maybe if it is omitted of this, we pointed out to him that it is.
Yeah, he has a valid point, but to add that, you know, they have an IMF negotiations and budget. As if, as if what's happening here is some circus, without due respect.
If it was, it was suggested to them that go out and look for this, look for this, look for that, and he's suggesting it might take up over the IMF, it's all right, we can, we can, we can allow, we can allow.
No, Mr. Chairman, he must withdraw that. This is a very important exercise. No, 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 I take strong exception to that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I think, I think, I think the honorable member. A legitimate point that has been made with respect to the importance of this exercise, that this is a referral from the Speaker of Parliament. The entire country, Ghanaian people, expect us to return a report to Mr. Speaker with respect to the grounds stipulated in the motion for the Honorable House to debate and to take a decision. And this is so important that we cannot, you know, I mean, be seen to be trivializing it. So that is a very legitimate point. Yes, honorable member.
With all due respect to the chair, I do not think that what the counsel for the Finance Minister said is in any way condescending. Obviously, the statement that he made was clearly in context. Okay, you've served the man with a letter that says that he should come and respond to seven specific items. One, despicable conflict of interest, ensuring.
Honorable, honorable member, you don't, you don't. Through all the serving grounds, no. Honorable, honorable member.
I will go through, but let me, let me make my point. And so if he appears before you and request that these grounds that you've listed and submitted to him by letter does not disclose any specific allegations of facts for him to respond, and then all of a sudden he's been given a list, which in my view does not relate to any fact whatsoever, and is being called upon to.
Honorable member, please, you are prejudging, you are prejudging the content, you are, no, 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 you are prejudging the content, please, honorable member, you are, you are, you are out of order. You are prejudging the content of the documents we submitted. Okay? No, no, honorable member, you are out of order. Can we, can we, can we listen? No, Honorable Minority Leader, can we listen to the Honorable Atu Fosin? Counsel, thank you very much. You can, if you want to be conferring with your client, why don't you bring your client? Which one?
Condescending, no, 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 Mr. Chairman. No, Mr. Chairman, no, no.
Yeah.
Please, you, Coach, you were not, you were not happy with an expression I used. And I, and I, and I did what gentlemen do.
No, no, I'd, I'd taken the time to explain. As far as I'm concerned, the statement was made in a specific contest. You, you gave me a list to go through. My view, and when I say my, I'm now putting on the shoe of the, of counsel on the other side.
So Chair, you can't make that point without talking about the more important things you have doing.
No, 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 no. So if you said that you threw all this at me and you expect that, what you also know very well, that I've got A, B, C, D to do, World Bank, this and this and that, I, Mr. Mr. Ochidako, is it difficult for you to rephrase it?
Oh, not at all, not at all. This is an important exercise, and we're only asking for direction so that we can finish it on time. That's all.
And that's what I said. Okay, but Atu?
Chairman, thank you very much. Chairman, I will be concentrating on item four of the motion, five, six, and seven. Ground four, five, six, and seven. That's my job today. So I will, I will, I will take you through one by one.
What are two forcing?
Chairman, for, I've set the tone. I'll come back on every single issue. That's why I tendered my motion in evidence. I'll pick paragraph by paragraph, expand it, and provide needed material evidence. But I yield now to those other grounds.
No, 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 no. Harun, I mean, you're confusing this, this committee. I thought you decided to take on the first one.
Yes, I have.
No, but you seem to be suggesting that you come back to them.
No, the Honorable Atu Fosin will speak to the grounds he's mentioned.
Uh huh. And then what?
At any time you need me, I'll come back.
What, we need you?
Yes.
That's fair. I thought you of your own volition was going to force yourself back on us again.
I've just ended in my motion in evidence. You haven't stated it yet. His study will provide you an opportunity to hear me more.
For us to call you if we want to, if we need you.
I believe so, I believe so.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. If we need you, if we don't need you, we will say good afternoon to you.
The Honorable Atu Fosin.
Mr. Chairman, to start with, I will start with item four, where we have here written, deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. Chairman, you, we are aware, and we have seen that since 2018, government since 2018 has been misreporting economic data to Parliament with the aim of misleading Parliament and investor community. The misreporting to Parliament was mainly to inform Parliament that the Finance Minister has complied with the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act 2018, Act 982, particularly when that was not the case.
Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the section four, section four. So Chairman, if I may refer you to the Fiscal Responsibility Act 2018, Act 8982, Act 982. So Chairman, the section one of the Fiscal Responsibility Act, which deals with the object of the act is clear. It says that the object of this act is to provide for fiscal responsibility rules and to ensure macroeconomic stability and debt sustainability. One tool says that for the purposes of section one, fiscal responsibility rules shall, A, correct distorted incentives, B, ensure fiscal discipline, C, prevent fiscal slippages, and D, improve fiscal and debt sustainability. So Chairman, today our debt is unsustainable. And the key question everyone else is asking is that how could we have a fiscal responsibility act with set of rules and yet our debt has become unsustainable? So I will take you through why we are where we are. So Chairman, the fiscal responsibility rule says that despite the fiscal policy indicators stated in section 16 of the Public Financial Management Act 2016, Act 921, the following numerical fiscal responsibility rules shall apply in the management of the public finances. So Chairman, A, the overall fiscal balance on cash basis for a particular year shall not exceed a deficit of 5% of gross domestic product for that year. And B, an amount, an annual positive primary balance shall be maintained. Chairman, this is clearly the fiscal responsibility rules for the Republic of Ghana. Section four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act 982, says that Parliament may, in accordance with Article nine, Article 82 of the Constitution, pass a vote of censure on the minister where the minister breaches section two of more than one percentage point. So Chairman, section two says that the fiscal responsibility rules should not be more than 5%. So one percentage point in addition will mean you, anytime you exceeded by 6%, a vote of censure may be presented to Parliament or somebody may trigger the vote of censure on you, may. The chairman, again, section two says that the primary balance must always be positive. So if you breach it by one percentage point, the. May trigger. What we have seen, what we have seen is that over the years, even though the minister responsible for finance has been present in Parliament, in the year 2018, Mr. Chairman, you can see it on the board, our minister responsible for finance and the government had said to Parliament that the fiscal deficit was 3.9% of GDP. In fact, in the year 2018, the reason why they said is 3.9% of GDP was that a key expenditure worth 8.9.8 billion Ghana cedis was excluded from the fiscal accounting. They were, they treated it below the line. And this has to do with the financial sector payment. So Chairman, fiscal deficit simple means when your expenditure exceeds your revenue, exceeds your revenue, then you throw out the fiscal deficit. And the law says that anytime you reach 6%, the vote of censure must happen. And this law was assented by His Excellency the President on 28 December 2018. So, Mr. Chairman, if you are to account for the 9.8 billion Ghana cedis that they excluded and treated it below the line, the actual fiscal deficit for the year 2018 was 7.1% of GDP. Clearly means that the censorship motion in line with section, section four of Act 982 triggers. And this is exactly three days after the law was assented to by the President. And the law, Mr. Chairman, has no transitional provision. So, so three days, three days. The law was passed on the 28th of December 2018, and by December 31st 2018, the minister has breached the fiscal responsibility rules already. So three days down the line. So Chairman, if I take you to 2019 also, our minister had informed Parliament that fiscal deficit was 4.8% of GDP, 4.8%. Again, he had excluded financial sector payment of 3.1, 3.1 billion Ghana cedis and also had excluded energy payment, energy payment of 5.1, 5.1 billion Ghana cedis from the fiscal accounting, from the fiscal accounting. So if you are to factor in all of that, the fiscal deficit is actually 7.1% of GDP, same as 2018. At the time, the fiscal rules had not been suspended, had not been suspended. And remember, the fiscal rules was suspended in the year 2020, when COVID came to our doorsteps. So at that point, the minister again breached the Fiscal Responsibility Act, particularly, particularly section two and section four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, in the year 2020, the deficit was 11.7, he claims, but the actual deficit as reported, if you factor in all what they have excluded, is 17.2% of GDP. The year 2022, 2021, the fiscal deficit as reported to Parliament was 9.2% of GDP, but the actual fiscal deficit for 2021 was 12.4% of GDP. So Chairman, let me take you to this energy payment. The minister.
But fair to the minister before he continue, with 2020, he came for suspension of the act. But I want you to follow the chronology of events. There were years, he said, I'm suspending fiscal responsibility act because of the circumstance of the situation. Continue, but.
He could legally do that.
Yes, in fact, section three, section three of the Fiscal Responsibility Act is under suspension of the fiscal responsibility rules. And so he could suspend it, he did not suspend it in 18, did not suspend it in the year 2019, but suspended it in the year 2020. And there are circumstances that you can suspend it. So he used COVID and suspended that, we all agree. But prior to that, he did not suspend the fiscal responsibility rule. So he fell and was in breach of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, as I said, the minister excluded the following payment, and this was given to us at the Finance Committee from the fiscal accounting. And this is summary of 2019 energy sector payment against supplementary appropriations. So Chairman, this is a document from the Ministry of Finance that they gave to us. The, I have the document here and I'm tendering it, obviously as the ranking member of the committee, so I have a copy, I will tender it to you, but I'm referring to the whole document. So when I finish, I'll give it to you. So Chairman, in the document before us, the document before us.
Could we start labeling this as evidence?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yes, you're doing that.
Yes, but, 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 Mr. Chairman, they made certain payment worth 5.1 billion Ghana cedis, energy payment, first to Ameri Energy, an amount of 530 million, second to Letasko, Letasko, 500 million, AXA Energy, 359, Carpower, million, everything is a million, Carpower, 656, you have Sonan Asagley, 519 million, and then TMG Trust Is Limited, which is fewer. which is fuel from E and I Vitale, amounting to one billion and eight hundred and sixty million. And then they pay Tratcom Energy, six hundred and thirty-one million. GNPC for 2018 refund for heavy fuel oil, an amount of eighty-six point four million. So Speaker, Mr. Chairman, this gives you a total of five point one billion Ghana cedis. All of this were treated below the line. Simple put, they did not include it in the expenditure to see the overall deficit for the period. So Chairman.
Wait, 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 bear with me. Can you help the committee by indicating one of these particular power companies, power, no, the generators, what were they installed? What were they installed in the country?
Mr. Chairman, my job is not to know what they installed, but I know the government of Ghana paid this money and treated it as amortization.
That's fine, but it would have helped us.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that some, most of them there are for the purposes of buying fuel and to power the power plant. For example, the amount that was paid to Letasko is fuel.
Calm down. What I'm saying is that you say it's not your job, but I'm just wondering if you could posit it properly. Yes, you are concerned with the figures. I sitting here, I'm interested in when this equipment were installed in the country. If you have no idea, that's fine.
I have no idea. I have no idea. Yeah.
And, and to be fair to the Honorable Atu Fosin, the evidence being presented relates to payments that were made at a specific point in time.
I appreciate that, but my question was simply if he knew when this machinery were installed. If you don't know, that's fine. I, I thought some of them, most of them were installed at the time when he was the Deputy Minister, but that is.
Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I'm not an I P P expert.
It's by the by, don't worry.
I deal with numbers. I'm giving you the numbers.
And the payments were not made at the time he was Deputy Minister?
Mr. Chairman, these payments were made in the year 2019, so many years after I left the Ministry of Finance. This was actually made by this government.
Installed those machinery, didn't they?
So Mr. Chairman, to take you through it, obviously, this was excluded to create impression that the minister responsible for finance had actually met the fiscal responsibility rules. So Chairman, let me now refer you.
Let me now refer you. You may want to
No, I, I still need the document.
You still need it.
I still need it. I would tender it. I have tendered the energy sector payment 2019 in evidence. But I have, I still need the, okay, maybe I can tear it and give it to you.
No, no, if, if you want to, if you want to tender it in whole, that is fine. After you have finished, you can tender it.
To you in evidence. So Chairman, the next point had to do with the same misreporting to Parliament. I have with me the Article nine, Article four consultation report from the International Monetary Fund, the IMF, dated December, 2019. And Mr. Chairman, let me refer you to paragraph sixteen.
Wait, before you do, what is that? What is that?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Ghana is a member of the International Monetary Fund. Every country IMF, every country that happens to be a member of the International Monetary Fund has to open their books once a year to the IMF to see the reporting of how the country's economy is going. Because, Mr. Chairman, the truth is, we're in a global world. If care is not taken and you allow a country's economy to crash, it will become a global issue for global community to take care of that particular company, uh, country. And so the IMF, per their mandate, as given to them by the United Nations, is to ensure that once a year they visit countries that are members. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that every country is a member of the IMF. And then you, they will come and see your books and report appropriately. This report has to go through the IMF four, IMF Board for approval. So Chairman, in the year 2019, the IMF undertook an Article four mission in Ghana. And as part of the document that they published on their website, and I've sent the link to this website to the clerk. I provided a link to the clerk. So Chairman, paragraph sixteen, paragraph sixteen, page eleven, page eleven, paragraph sixteen of the staff report, Article four says, fiscal rules under Ghana Public Financial Management Act, fiscal rules could be strengthened, box one. It goes on to say that about two point eight percentage point of GDP in financial and energy sector payments were recorded below the line in the year 2019 budget because the government considers the financial sector costs as one-off and energy cost as debt amortization. Best international practices would include this transaction above international or include these transactions above the line as they reflect direct government obligation or government transactions transfers to state-owned enterprises. In addition, spending on roads into bracket cocoa board and potential infrastructure collateralization on box site export, Sino-Hydro should be recorded in the central government budget. Finally, a format debt anchor targeted a sustainable debt to GDP ratio over the medium term could effectively guide the fiscal policy and reduce uncertainty above the debt trajectory. So Chairman, the point.
So we get the notes right. The IMF is not by that. It's wrong what they did. They said that best international practices would have ensured that it was done in a different way, but that's not said what they, was done was wrong.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm coming there. I, I, I'm, I'm building a point. So allow me to finish. When I build my point, you, you understand where I'm coming from. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the point that the IMF made in the 2019 Article four consultation.
You come back there. You haven't answered my question.
No, no, I'm, I'm building a point. So let me finish, and I'm sure when I'm done, you can. If you want to close the exam with me, you can, but I just want so that I don't lose my thoughts. So, Mr. Chairman, the.
I won't worry if you lose a bit of it.
Mr. Chairman, the, the key point here is that an expenditure worth two point eight percent of GDP was excluded from the fiscal reporting because government treated it differently, treated it differently against the international best practices. So Chairman, expenditure of two point eight percent. So Chairman, if you are to factor that expenditure in, clearly the fiscal rules was breached. So Chairman, the, the other point, the other point had to do with the fact that certain payment.
Did you say two point?
Eight percent of GDP.
Of GDP.
Yeah, of, of GDP. And I've given you the nominal numbers of GDP. So Chairman, the key point also is that Sino-Hydro payment was also excluded from the fiscal reporting. Government treated it differently. And so even though the Sino-Hydro payment is due for payment, the debt repayment is due next year. Now, because of the way they treated it as if it's not part of central government debt, how are we going to service the debt? Because already not part. And if you use taxpayers' money to service it, the accounting will mean that you have not recorded the expenditure and now you are paying for something that you have not recorded. Clearly, this is dishonest, and we believe that this shouldn't be the case. So Chairman, after 2019, in the year 2020, in the year 2020, government of Ghana had gone to the IMF to get some loan. And the loan is called the Rapid Credit Facility, Rapid Credit Facility. And under the Rapid Credit Facility, before you go to the IMF, you have to give them the economic data. And I refer you to page three, page three of the Rapid Credit Facility document at the IMF website, at the IMF website. And page three, there is a box there called Table one, Table one. The government of Ghana gave this document to IMF. The source is Ghana Government Authorities. So Chairman, government has said to IMF that in the year 2018, the fiscal deficit was seven percent and not four point eight percent as they told us. So in one breath, they had said to government, Parliament of Ghana, that is four point eight percent. In another breath, in government official document, they said to us that the fiscal deficit, they said to IMF, the fiscal deficit over seven percent of GDP, acknowledging that the energy payment and financial sector payment were expenditure. So Chairman, in the year 2019, they had informed IMF again in the Rapid Credit Facility that the fiscal deficit is seven point five percent of GDP. Seven point five percent of GDP, breaching the fiscal responsibility rules. This is what they gave. Chairman, I tender this in evidence, tender this in evidence. And then the 2019 one. Now, I will take you to 2020 staff report, 2021 staff report. The 2021 staff report, staff, IMF staff report also acknowledges that the fiscal deficit for 2018 was seven percent. The fiscal deficit for 2021 is seven point five percent. So clearly, the fiscal responsibility rules were breached in the year 2018 and 2019. So if you ask me.
The Honorable Atu Fosin, you've referred to two separate documents.
Yes.
Would you want to tender them in evidence?
Yes, I'm tendering all of them in evidence.
Okay, so let, let them be tended to the, the clerk of the committee. Yes, Honorable Patrick Guama.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not done.
No, I think he, he has a.
I think it's very important to have those documents well numbered because the way, the way he's speaking and tendering in document, we need to have a clear view of what he's tendering.
And the clerk was taking charge of that. Yeah, yes. You have written them properly, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, so.
Where did he hear you, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we are doing that.
So you can allay his fears.
So Mr. Chairman, the 2021 Article four consultation document from the IMF, also in page three, page three of the document also made this point very clear that the fiscal deficit for the year 2019 was seven point five percent of GDP. And the primary balance is seven point, negative, is, is seven point five percent of GDP and not as reported by the minister responsible for finance to Parliament, representing four point eight percent of GDP. So clearly, it was breached. So Chairman, the second fiscal rule has to do with the primary, uh, primary balance. We were told that under the rules, if you exceed the deficit, the, the balance by one percent, because it's supposed to be positive at all times, under the document that they submitted to IMF, the primary balance was negative one point, uh, negative one point eight. So there was a deficit of one point eight. And that is why we are saying that the train for the censorship motion moved in the year 2018. In fact, if you are to go by it, somebody could have brought the motion to censure the minister in the year 2018 or 2019 because he breached the rules. And, and, and to my surprise, these are rules that were set by the minister himself when this, this bill, he brought the bill to Parliament for a reason. The reason is to ensure fiscal sustainability and debt sustainability. If you breach these rules, it has long-term repercussion on the Ghanaian economy. And today, we are seeing what is happening. So Chairman, I tender this one to in evidence. I tender this one to in, in evidence. Chairman, I have said.
Say, Mr. Coach, you see our handicap, even those of us here, you see our handicap. You tell them about the law, you tell them about the provisions. We have no.
No, I, I have copies of the law I can give to you. I can give you copies of the law.
So that's the point that council for the finance minister raised originally. If we had acceded to that, everybody would have copies of what we're talking about. And so we'll be able to put you on the spot if you are giving us a bit of tips.
The, the item on motion, on the motion item five deals with fiscal recklessness.
So the Honorable Atu Fosin, you finish with.
I'm down with item four.
With item four.
Item four.
So you're, you're now moving to item.
Item five.
Item five.
Mr. Coach, I think we should stick to the original plan. Our colleagues want to ask questions. You put all of them together. I think they might lose their train of thought.
Okay, so if you can ask questions on item, item four, and then I move on to item five.
I think that's a better way of going about it, yes.
Very well. The Honorable Minister.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity. I want to find out from the honorable ranking member whether he knows Dr. Abet Toma Mama.
Of course, Abet Toma Mama works, used to work with the IMF in this country as the res rep, resident representative. So it's an IMF staff that often meets the Finance Committee.
Chairman, I want to find out from the ranking member again whether he is aware that on the ninth of May, 2020, all these allegations that he's recounted were flatly denied by the said Dr. Abet Toma Mama on Joy News File.
So Chairman, I am making reference to documents published by the IMF Board, official document. Toma Mama is not the IMF Board. He's not IMF. He's an individual who works with IMF. His views are his views. I am ref, my references are official document from the IMF, and you can get it from the IMF website. I'm not aware that IMF website is stronger than Joy News website.
Mr. Coach, I'm, no, let's, let's get to it. He asked a straightforward question. Are you aware, A, B, C, D, yes or no? I think that's all he was asking for. No, he did. That wasn't his question. His question was, are you aware that Mr. Ture Mama, whatever he said, made this? Did you, did you?
Mr. Chairman, I am not aware.
Thank you.
Chairman, indeed, they said Mr. Dr. Toma Mama was the IMF country rep for Ghana. And he was called on news file to respond to allegations that had been made by the honorable ranking member and the minority with respect to misreporting of figures that the finance ministry had presented to the IMF. And he was categorical that all the figures that the minority were alluding to were known to the IMF and that the government of Ghana had not misrepresented any figures to the IMF as he is alleging today. I put it to him.
Mr. Chairman, I, I vehemently disagree with what he put out there. Globally, 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 countries report on the fiscal with a manual. So Chairman, I will share the manual with you, and I think I have a copy with the manual. I brought a copy. I'll give you the manual. And the manual indicates how countries deals with their, deals with the issues of debt reporting or fiscal reporting. So Chairman, in the case of currently, the world is using Government Finance Statistics Manual 2014, Government Finance Statistics Manual 2014. And this manual is not alien to government of Ghana. Ghana has been reporting our fiscal in line with this manual since Adam. I'm surprised that all of a sudden, the reporting has changed to something that is not globally accepted. And that is why the IMF in their own document had said that best practices recognize that this should be treated above the line. And this is in line with the manual. Mr. Chairman, I shared the manual. It's a very bulky document. Since we are now in paperless regime, I don't want to waste money and print it. So, Mr. Chairman, I will share the soft copy with your clerk now. This is a document that deals with how reporting should be. It is not for someone to show us how the reporting should be. It is a global manual, and everybody abides by that.
We, we have copies of the transcript. We will be giving another opportunity to.
Look, and of course, obviously, the finance minister is also here with his lawyers, so obviously, yeah, listen.
Thank you. I'll leave it there for now. Yeah, I'll leave it there for now.
Honorable Kwame, you may do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Atu Fosin, would you be kind enough to turn to the paragraph before this one? By what, I want to find out what is the source of this document?
If you may, I have the budget statement before me, so I'll take you through the budget statement one by one and refer you to the budget statement where the source is coming from. So Chairman, to start with, let me start with the 2018 budget statement.
Is this an extract from the budget and which year's budget?
Okay, every single ten, every single data is coming from government official document, coming from budget statement. And Mr. Chairman, you agree with me that when I said, I said fiscal data from the Ministry of Finance website. So whilst we are here, I have access to internet. I can take you to. I can take you to the Ministry of Finance website now and point to where all these numbers are, where I picked them from. So we can do that right away, and you can know exactly where it's coming from.
You with a question on the topic of ahead, without taking us through the tone you are talking about. Are you able to tell us 2018, 11. whatever, 21.9 whatever? Are you able to tell us, this is from here, this is from here? If you can't, that's okay. Can you tell us?
Yeah, I can. The deficit as reported in the year 11.6 at 3.9 is in the 2019 budget. And 2019. If you are to look at the appendix 3C and 2C of the budget statement of 2018 and 2019 media review on the budget, these numbers are there for 2C and 3C of the budget statement. Again, the financial sector-
Who should finish what?
I thought he was explaining-
Question that I asked, is this data something that Honorable Atu Fosin had prepared? Or it is already part of an existing official document? That's what I want to find out. I asked the question because you actually color some places with red and white. And you are using this document to contradict the finance minister's position. So we must know the source of this document, whether it's coming from you or it's an official document. That's why I ask.
To start with, these documents are official numbers published by the government of Ghana. All what I did was to take those numbers and represent them in a manner for everyone to understand.
So this is your document?
So it is, it is my presentation. But the document, the numbers are coming from government official document. And I've made reference to the budget statement, appendix 3C and 2C of 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. And you can check them. I have copies of the budget statement here. If you want me to take you through, I will take you through. And you can also find these numbers in the ministry, on the Ministry of Finance website under fiscal data. Every year, data is published by the state, and it's there for everyone to see. So that is where I took the numbers from, and these are official numbers. The ones that I have colored is to show clearly that what the government of Ghana reported and the red to show what they should have reported. Because, for example, the energy payment, they treated it as amortization. Amortization simple means debt repayment. How could you repay a debt? And this debt where this, that that's supposed to reduce your debt.
I guess that's not his point. His point is really, wait a minute. He said, where did these numbers come from? I think he is quite happy with that.
I think I'm happy to hear from you that they are your numbers, even though you extracted them from other documents. That's it. That's the answer I got from him. If you would want to-
Let's be fair with our colleague. I'm not sure that's the point he's making. He's saying that even though-
He says that these documents are his presentation and that he had extracted the numbers from other documents. That's the importance of what I had.
I guess what is important, what is important is that he says these numbers, though are presented here by him, are not his numbers. He said they moneyed from official. Well, when he borrow, he extracted them. I think he's got the documents over there. He referred us to those.
So also for your information, also for your information before he comes in, also for your information, the government's 2022 budget, and that's before me, and the 2022 media review. And let me refer you to 2022 budget, appendix 2C of the 2022 budget. Appendix 2C of the 2022 budget.
And the appendix 2C, 3C?
2C and 3C.
Those are all from 20-
Yes. Mr. Chairman, appendix 2C of the 2022 budget, page 234, page 234, under other expenditures. Governments had said that going forward from 2022, they are treating all energy payment and financial sector payment above the line, adding it to expenditure. Considering that what they did was wrong and going further, going forward, they are going to-
That's your clause. Tell us, that's your clause. Tell us what is there, what is there?
Mr. Chairman, what is here is that they have treated energy payment, energy payment of 4.4 billion and 24 million as expenditure. The same energy payment, once upon a time, they said it's not expenditure, and they should treat it as amortization. They have changed their position, moved it from amortization now to expenditure. After we raised the issue, now they are saying that they are going to comply.
That's what you-
No, honorable members, to be fair to the witness, we would have an opportunity to evaluate the evidence presented. We should not, as a committee, be asking questions that sound as if we are bugging the witness. We should, we should ask questions arising out of the presentation in a manner that elicits the information for our evaluation as evidence before the committee. Honorable Kwame Imedu.
He's laughing because, yeah, I'm not, I'm not-
Of the sponsors of this motion. You are part of the sponsors of the motion.
You are kidding, you are kidding, my friend.
It's a few minutes, it's a few minutes ago.
Coach, chairman of what, of what?
So we should be very careful.
Drop that, drop that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I ask the questions to understand him better.
I appreciate that.
You actually make, I don't want to, I want to refrain from using the word allegation. And by your choice of words, what was it? That the grounds that you are making, and the grounds you are making, you-
Why not, why not go on with the next question? Yeah, go on, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will do that. But again, you also say that the finance minister acceded the fiscal deficit by 2.8% of the, 2.8 percentage points of the GDP. And your grounds for saying that, where do you have the figures? Or is there any official figure that shows that the finance minister had actually acceded it by 2.8?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the document before us. In the budget statement, if you look at appendix 3C, the same budget statement, the same budget statement, appendix 3C. Which year are you making reference, 2019? Okay, so which one is that? Mr. Chairman, first of all, to start with, in the 2019 budget, the minister had reported to us in paragraph 99, page 23, that the fiscal deficit is 3.7% of GDP for the year 2018. This is according to the minister's document. The chairman, if you go to the same budget statement, the budget statement, the energy sector payment, instead of him treating it above the line, what he did was, he showed it below the line, clearly excluding it from the expenditure. So an amount of 9.8 billion Ghana-
That isn't his question. You've taken us through all of that already.
Yes.
There was a point when you said that there was some 2.8%-
Of GDP, that's where I'm, that is where I'm going. For example, in the year 2019, 2019, the minister had reported to Parliament that the fiscal deficit is 4.8% of GDP. The IMF had said that, per their standards, the world standard, the fiscal deficit is supposed to be 7.5% of GDP. In the staff report, they had said 2.8% of GDP were excluded from the expenditure. When they asked the government, the government treated them differently. One, he treated the energy payment as amortization, debt repayment. But it's not debt repayment. It's an expenditure.
Where, in which document are you getting this from?
So the document is the budget statement.
Okay.
It is in the budget statement, appendix 2B, 2C and 3C.
Okay.
Under below the line expenditures, the amount is there clearly.
That's fine.
And nobody can run away from it. So if you want me to point the numbers to him, I can point them to him if he has a copy of the budget.
You're right. Yeah, go on.
So your last question, and then we can move to the next honorable member.
Am I limited to three questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, preliminary objection to the way this committee is conducting business. We are open to cross-examination, and you can evaluate the evidence we are submitting to you. But let this committee be reminded of the exact words in Article 82.4. It says, states, and I quote, "A minister of states in respect of whom a vote of censure is debated under clustery of this article is entitled during the debate to be heard in his defense." The motion we move is not against any member of this committee. So we expect him to hear and defend himself. If this committee is reducing itself, let us know.
Wait a minute, reducing itself to doing what?
I'm just reminding the committee of Article 82.4.
Wait a minute, this committee is reduced, Arun, this committee is reducing itself to doing what? No, no, we didn't hear you. It wasn't clear. Arun, behave yourself. What do you mean by, what is that? All right, we overruled you there. So your next question.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Atu Fosin, kindly permit me, I'm not an accountant. Neither am I a finance person. But you suggest that the minister, improving your point, you are saying that there were some reports that the minister had reported above the line. And then he actually brought it below the line. I think you said, instead of being above the line, he brought it below the line. Right. I may want you to explain that. But the question I want to ask is that, does it necessarily suggest that the minister is dishonest if an item is reported below the line?
Thank you very much.
Is that what you want the committee to believe in?
I think you have, you have really asked a very good question. Mr. Chairman, the key point here is, the statistics are there for a reason. The reason is, you don't add to the debt unnecessarily. Or you don't add to the debt at levels that the country will see debt overhang. Our problem today is as a result of high debt, nothing more, that has triggered everything else. What I've done here is to track how this debt became debt, the fiscal part. When the minister, if the minister had been honest with us,
the minister being dishonest, is it the guideline of the IMF that should be used at all levels?
Mr. Chairman-
You want a yes or no answer from him?
Let me answer this question before. Mr. Chairman, let me come in.
The chairman decided if we yield to the minority leader, he can yield to you.
Chairman-
Oh, you're taking it to yourself, you're yielding it to yourself.
The honorable Anu Medu had to take it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the statistics are there for a reason. That is why we have a law called Fiscal Responsibility Act.
So I think you are not being fair to us.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, he asked a question.
He's been honest or dishonest. Why can't you do-
Mr. Chairman, I have to build a point. And my point is that, yes, he has been dishonest.
First off, let's go.
He has been dishonest because it would have triggered the Fiscal Responsibility Act, section four, and it could have been censured.
He will speak for himself, so.
Chairman, just on the same question, to answer the honorable Anu Medu, probably even in the course of the honorable Atu's submission, he stated without any ambiguity that international best practice, indeed, the chairman even had to paraphrase him and ask whether this is international best practice. So this is our position. For instance, chairman, I'll yield again to Atu. I'm holding the PIAC newsletter, Key Lessons After 10 Years of Petroleum Revenue Management Act. And then if you come to findings, chairman, this significant, it states, "For the first time since Ghana started receiving petroleum revenue in 2011."
Share the particular page, so we can make notes of it.
Yes, PIAC newsletter.
Year and page?
PIAC newsletter issued to July to December 2022. So the media-
Your friends all seem to have copies, except to those of us who are not your friends.
No, I'll give you a copy. You know that, you know that you remain a friend. It states, "For the first time since Ghana started receiving petroleum revenue in 2011, the Disassemblé Coman Fund received an amount of 32.38 billion." Following the 2019 decision of the Supreme Court, in the case of Bodo and Ayene versus the Attorney General, they didn't add Ayene though. However, that this best man made was 174% of the ABFA. 1.74%, 1.74% instead of the 5% specified in the Supreme Court ruling. Another discrepancy that you should take note would lead evidence to it. And the Jubilee reporting, again, in the PIAC report of the 100 million US dollars, which is meant for Jubilee, which is in an offshore account, are lead evidence to provide that when he got approval to be able to do that. Because in the subsidiaries of GMPC, which was in your committee's report, you never added Jubilee holding as a subsidiary. Atu, continue. Thank you, Chair, with your indulgence.
I think he has answered the question. Honorable here, you have your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. Leader and the proponent, you have quoted from the PIAC reports. The PIAC report is not in evidence. Would you want to tender it in evidence?
We said so. We said so.
Because of the numbering-
We will say so, and we submit so in evidence. Thank you, Atu, continue.
Okay, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, counsel.
On the list, there's no PIAC report. This is a PIAC newsletter. Once again, we are extending the fishing net. I think we should, we should bear this in mind.
That's noted, thank you. Oh, tender the actual PIAC report.
Yes.
The same thing as you put there in the report.
I think, you know, for the benefit of the efficient discharge of our, you know, functions as a committee, since you and the honorable minister are here, maybe you should take down a list of documents that have been omitted. And then we can make, we can make an order for them to be supplied at the close of the hearing. Because you would have an opportunity-
But that is exactly the point that we are revisiting.
No.
Consistently, they are saying that this will lead us to a world whose chase, consistently, that's the point they are making.
Yes, but we arrived at a consensus that they should sit in, listen, and then be able to respond afterwards.
But wait a minute, let me clarify with Arun. Did you say that this is replicated in the other one, or that one is replicated in this?
Yes, this paragraph is about the same wording, even in the PIAC report itself.
Yeah.
I therefore will submit same in evidence. I thank you, Chair.
You submit which one in evidence? This or the PIAC report proper?
The PIAC report proper.
So let's take the PIAC report and take this one out.
You see, chairman, I'm not sure that you want to determine how I think.
Well, no, because counsel is strenuously objecting to our presentation of the documentation.
This is a document I'm referring to, PIAC newsletter. I said so. I said so, in the evidence of what I'll rely on, without any contradiction, I said I'll rely on the PIAC report. Thank you.
You, you said two things, you see, you, you said we are directing you on which one to choose against the other. But so far, I'm not so sure. No, no. I thought we were supporting it. So what is it that? Yeah, so now what, we are, we are, which one do we put in evidence? The PIAC report?
The paper I submitted to is already in evidence. So this is additional to the list of, you asked me the first primary question, what do you intend to rely on?
Sure.
So read it.
So what, you mean the paper, the list?
Yes, it's already in evidence.
Talking about the paper like this one.
I've just quoted a paragraph in the newsletter, which is paraphrased from the PIAC report.
That's helpful, so I'm suggesting that we can, because his objection is to the introduction of this new one. So if you say it is in the PIAC report, we are happy to rely on the PIAC report and then make, make some progress. Make note of where in the PIAC report that we get this particular passage that you, you read, or whatever it is that.
Chairman, I'll do so, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, is I understanding that this will be, will not be part of it, it will be excluded?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Chairman, to conclude on my first point. The, my matter is that our minister responsible for finance misled parliament.
Wait, wait a minute, which one is it, you are concluding on which one?
On, on item four.
I thought you completed it, that is why the rest of questions.
Some questions, so I had to, something four, five, six.
I think Sammy has got some questions for, for you.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make my opening, my closing mark on that one, so if.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. The publication that the Honorable Eja Pamesa referred to. I have an extract here, still on the website of GhanaWeb, dated ninth May twenty-twenty. The interview of Dr. Albert Tunamama to the JOFM program news file. For our record, Chairman. The report states, under fiscal deficit. The IMF country director said the IMF and the government of Ghana have different views on the calculation of fiscal deficit. And they have agreed to disagree on it. He said, while the IMF calculates fiscal deficit with the financial the government argues strongly that the fiscal deficit ought to be calculated without the financial sector costs and energy sector costs. The IMF country director therefore revealed that the seven point five fiscal deficit for twenty nineteen in their statement included the financial sector payments and energy sector payments. While the four point five in the twenty nineteen budget does not include the financial sector and energy sector payments. The comparison that I see is comparing two different things on one side. And we are aware of the differences, he said in the interview. So I just want to place on record that it is erroneous for the impression to be created that the IMF country director has discounted or dispelled the very eloquent and forceful submission of the ranking member of the finance committee.
But actually, rather, you put it quite well. What seems to, for those of us listening, is that it's a divergence of views. The IMF appears to have looked at it from a different spectacle. And then the Ghana team appears to have looked at it from a different telescope. So it's a, it's a different interpretation on the other. So we would not.
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, you know, the, the, the Honorable Eja Pamesa earlier has sought to create the impression that, that these matters have been dispelled. So I just thought for the record, this is, this is, this is a house of records. Yeah, I have another question. Can the Honorable Ranking Member confirm that these figures you have provided here today are exactly what was contained in the Finance Minister's application to the IMF for the one billion dollar IMF COVID-nineteen relief fund? When they wanted one billion dollars from the IMF, which figures did they use?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, when the Minister responsible for finance approached the IMF for one billion rapid credit facility. They used the data that converged with IMF numbers. Clearly, they did not use the data that they presented to parliament.
You see the unfairness to the committee? I mean, the two of you are talking about data that you know about. Could you confirm that what they sent to this one is this one?
So, so, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, to start with, I'll go back to the numbers. The data that they sent to IMF was that in the year twenty eighteen, Ghana's fiscal deficit was seven point one percent of GDP.
Yeah, I take to mean the Ministry of.
The Ministry of Finance, this is an institution, the Ministry of Finance.
In twenty nineteen budget, instead of the seven point one, authoritatively, the minister reported three point seven percent for the record.
So even though, even though, even though they had informed IMF that in the year twenty eighteen, the fiscal deficit was seven point one percent of GDP. They told parliament that the fiscal deficit was three point nine percent of GDP.
I also take it that when you say that they informed them, they would have informed them, yeah, Ministry of Finance would have informed IMF by way of certain documentation.
By way of documentation, the documentation is what I presented to you.
Which is, which is.
The rapid credit facility document, can I have a?
So what, what, what your Ministry of Finance is writing to them, they write under?
No, because the, under the document, they show the source. And they say that the source is coming from the authority, government of Ghana authority. So, and that you will see it in, in, in page three of the document. So the question here is, the Minister of Finance misled parliament. Obviously, by presenting different set of data to IMF and different set of data to, to, to the Republic of Ghana.
Okay.
And that is why we are saying.
That, that is, that is, that is, well taken. Can we have your next question?
My final question on this ground four relates to the matter I raised. As ranking member on the Committee of Finance, has your committee enquired from the Finance Minister why on this particular matter, he presented different sets of figures? One to the Parliament of Ghana and a different one to the IMF, when they needed one billion dollars desperately?
Yes, we have, I mean, several occasions we've raised this issue. I have particularly raised it as ranking member with my colleague Deputy Ranking and other members of the committee. It is for that reason why the Ministry of Finance, led by the minister, had agreed that going forward in the year twenty-twenty-two, they would treat all these expenditures above the line. And that is why you will notice in the twenty-twenty-two budget, that all these expenditures, all of a sudden, has been treated differently. In the past, they used to treat it as if it is not expenditure, but today they are treating it separately. So they have accepted that going forward, this is not the way to report it. And this means that all these years, they have breached the fiscal responsibility rules. Meanwhile, they were covering it underground.
Okay, Honorable Members, any other questions? Honorable Patrick Boomer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, on ground four. Honorable Ranking Member, your ground four starts with the word deliberate and dishonest. But from what you've done so far and from what you've presented to us. You haven't been able to lead any evidence to support the fact that there was this dishonest misreporting by the minister.
So you, you are agreeing that there is misreporting, but you think it's not deliberate, is that what you're trying to say, sir?
You say the unfairness in the question, see, we are not passing judgment.
I didn't get him well, so I needed to get clarity in the question.
What he said was that he looked at what you, you, you put out there, you're talking about dishonesty and all of that. So he said, at the end of the day, from what you presented, there doesn't seem to be any fairness.
No, no, because, Honorable Harun, let me finish with this, please. The, the, the key question is, there is a Fiscal Responsibility Act. And the act in section two is clear, that when a minister.
Mr. Coach, Chairman, I'm prepared to make progress, that's your view.
And when, yes, no, there is, there is. Honorable Kati, if, if I may land, there is a Fiscal Responsibility Act. And there, there's a set of rules that says that the fiscal, overall fiscal deficit should not exceed five percent, section two. And the primary balance must always be positive. And it goes on in section four, saying that if a minister exceeds it by one percentage point.
I may have exceeded it mistakenly, erroneously, that doesn't make it dishonest, that's the point that he was making.
Knowing very well that you have exceeded it. Instead of reporting the right numbers, the minister dishonestly decided to treat certain expenditures below the line, obviously to evade the fiscal responsibility act.
You added even more to it, evade than all of that, let's leave it at that.
Not to go through.
You got another question? Yes, okay, okay.
Still on Patrick. Patrick, yes, those words, you may disagree with the word deliberate and dishonest. Without wanting you to answer, between the Parliament of Ghana and the IMF. To whom does the minister owe an obligation of reporting accurately on the management of our public resources? We simply are saying that in a subsequent letter, you agreed to a deficit of seven point one percent to the IMF. When in fact, you reported three point seven to the Ghanaian Parliament. If I had used the word false reporting, probably that would even be stronger. So we, we are just talking about inaccurate reporting. And for me, the significant thing the Honorable Ablaqua and Atu have done, responding to Honorable Mesa. Is to appreciate that, yes, there was disagreement between methodology. But the same minister considered to international best practice in his subsequent actions. So that gives him out when in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, he did not yield to the international best practice. So for a record.
That doesn't make it dishonest.
Mr. Chairman, I, I disagree strongly on that. And, yeah, yes, because you see, if, if, if report. Well, I mean, we will evaluate the evidence, and I want us to cross that bridge when we get there. But what is going around the table suggests that we need to clarify for purposes of the Ghanaian people. So if a minister knew, or ought reasonably to have known, that below the line reporting will understate the deficit and still went ahead and they did below the line reporting. Understating that is dishonesty. There can be nothing more dishonest than that. And so we need, we need to be, we need to, I, I don't, I don't want us to be passing judgment around the table. You know, but, no, but, but of course, no, but of course, but of course, but of course, but of course, that is what is taking place, Honorable Members.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Honorable Counsel.
With all due respect, I think it's a bit too early.
Yes.
To hear pronouncements.
So, so counsel, you are, you are comfortable when the pronouncements, the pronouncements and the, and the, and the insinuations are coming from the side that supports the Finance Minister.
But you are not supposed to take sides, but you are not supposed to take sides on these matters, respectfully.
Counsel, I think we, we, we resolve it, we resolve it, so, yeah, we leave it.
Chairman, let me just, that your box side is still unprocessed. Your creditor wants his money for the six hundred million US dollars. It will come to hit the public purse and the public will be made to pay. That is why you must accept that when you come to parliament, and for me, we stated it even in the debate. There are times that we are disappointed in ourselves and in the institution of parliament. If parliament approved a loan of one billion or six hundred million in the name of Bata. And in twenty twenty-three, you don't have tomatoes in exchange for pepper. Parliament must accept that it is not holding and protecting class well. So giving you an example of contingent liability, where you stated to the people's representative that on this matter, Bata, exchange of goods for goods. Tomorrow, when the public is paying with hard N Forex, you will appreciate what that means.
Harun, all of this is pretty easy export factor, isn't it? Yeah.
Okay, please go on, Honorable Patrick Boomer.
Thank you. Chairman, for the record, the twenty eighteen budget was presented in November twenty-seventeen, for the record. The twenty nineteen budget was presented in November twenty-eighteen. At the time that the legislation that my good friend is citing had not come into force. So it's an inappropriate legislation that he's seeking to rely on to establish. Was dishonest.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the lawyer is for the minister will address us on that point, so.
In fact, Chairman, no, Chairman.
And let's not debate it around the table.
But fair to Honorable Atu Fosin, he read into your record the day the President assented to the bill as an act.
Very well, yes.
He did, he did, he did. No, he himself said December. I said he said it, so it is not for Patrick to tell him what is appropriate, he did so. He said three months, go back to your record. When he was talking, I listened, he said three months later.
Yes, I said, the date of assent is twenty-eighth of December twenty-eighteen. And I said, that was the day His Excellency the President assented to the bill.
Go, go on with your question.
Okay, and, and, and I talked about the fact that three days after twenty-eighteen, he breached it. And twenty nineteen is where I'm even dwelling. Twenty nineteen, he breached it completely, and the rules were suspended in the year twenty-twenty, not twenty-nineteen.
Very well, Honorable Boomer, you are done. Honorable Senator Rollins. Please, order, Honorable Members.
Thank you, Coach. My, my question is back to this table with regards to the fiscal deficit. Was there any communication subsequently from the minister to the House, given the difference in the figures that he presented to parliament versus the figures presented to the IMF with regards to the same budgets?
There hasn't been statement from the minister himself to parliament. What we have done over the years is that we've always raised it on the floor during the parliamentary debates. Ministers and members of parliament has gotten opportunity to speak to the fact. This only until the year twenty-twenty-two, when the twenty-twenty-two budget was read. And changes were made when the minister, as part of his statement, when he was winding up, made statement that suggests that he has changed from the previous report into a current report, when I raised the issue. Please go, go ahead.
And given the reference document, was a reason given at that point for why that change in reporting had occurred from the previous budget to this, this current one?
All what they said is that they've listened to us and they are changing the methodology.
Very well, Honorable Senator Rollins.
All that they said, all that.
They have listened to us and they've changed the methodology.
Who is the all?
At, at the committee, when the issue was raised. That's why they changed in methodology from below the line accounting to above the line accounting. They said they have listened and they have changed it.
Honorable Members, any more issues relating to item four? Okay, Honorable Eja Pamesa.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to find out from Honorable Atu Fosin, whether he's aware that IMF ordinarily will sanction countries that misreport to them, whether he's aware.
Mr. Chairman, it depends on the level of misreporting and whether you are in the program or you are not under a program. So if you under, if under Article Four, they will not sanction you, they, they will not sanction you. If, if, if it has to do with the under program and there is some precautions, you have to do it, or there's something you have to do, you don't do it.
Even if you are dishonest, they won't sanction you.
Under Article Four, no, no.
In event, the period that we are talking about, Ghana was under a program. I want to find out from him whether he is aware, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, Ghana was under an IMF program. Fact.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to find out from him whether he is aware that Ghana, between the period twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-two, has been sanctioned by the IMF.
Mr. Chairman, Ghana led the IMF program in the year twenty-nineteen. The reporting, as I'm talking about, at the time, end of year twenty-nineteen, Ghana was not in an IMF program. And so this cannot warrant a sanction from the IMF.
Very well.
Chairman, just on sanctions, and Chairman, we are talking about protecting public resources of Ghana. And ensuring that we work in a manner which reflects the public interest. What the Minister of Finance have succeeded in doing is to take Ghana into a debt distressed country with unsustainable debt. Now, the IMF board, the IMF board will indicate to you that where your debt is unsustainable. I'm coming to Sanations regime, where your debt is unsustainable, you are not likely to get board approval. And it affects the quantum of resources you are asking for from the IMF. You want three billion, they will look at your debt. And if it is not sustainable, so Mesa, the sanctions may not necessarily be, we have punished you. A denial, where we are today as a country, if we do fail in getting an IM intervention. That will be fatal to the future of this country.
That will be the result of what Atu is talking about, the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen.
We are just saying that sanctions is not like a carrot. We are just saying that sanctions is not like a carrot and stick hypothesis where you are given a carrot. We are saying that the stick may manifest in a board taking a stronger position against Ghana because these figures will ultimately affect our debt threshold and how they relate to us under a fine program. Thank you.
Chairman, I, I, with all due respect to the Minority Leader, this statement is purely speculative. My statement or question was to the effect to the accusation of misreporting by the government of Ghana under the stewardship of the Finance Minister. And I wanted to find out from the proponent whether Ghana had been sanctioned for misreporting. And his answer was categorical.
Yeah, no.
No.
Yeah, sure. So any question?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Um, okay, Chairman, even though no sanctions, at least it compelled corrective behavior by the minister.
My, 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 this table, there was this, I don't you, there was this, the two of us, yeah, you know, so let's wait, we'll get to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, our grounds says.
No, wait, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute, um, Honorable Ahefou.
Yeah, check the staff for us. We have the technicians here.
Yes, Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask just a question for clarification. Honorable Atu, in your presentation, you alluded to Section Two and Section Four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. And you stated clearly that a breach of Section Two is a ground based on which parliament may pass a vote of censure on the minister. I want to ask you whether sanction or no sanction by the IMF. Parliament under Section Four, based on the breach can proceed to censure the minister responsible.
Parliament of Ghana does not report to IMF. Parliament of Ghana obviously relies on the laws of Ghana. We passed this law, the law mandates us that if the minister breaches rules, he has to be censured. And I'm going online, in line with what is before us, Act 982. It's clear that when the minister breaches Section Two, more than one percentage point, he may be censured and that is the basis of our grounds.
Thank. Okay, thank you. Honorable Atu Fosun, you may now move to, um, yeah, ground, ground five.
Uh, just one innocuous question to Honorable. On, um, whether the GFS manual you spoke about, whether there are any items that will have to be reported either below the line or above the line, anything like that, it's just a simple question.
If you look at the GFS manual, um, under paragraph 4.53, it, it, you can, you can see below the line, the definition is there and ab- above the line definition is there and.
And by the way, what is GFS?
Government Finance Statistics 2014, that is the global manual that countries use in fiscal reporting.
Very well. Now, can you now move to, um, item five?
Um, Mr. Chairman, item five, our grounds is that there has been fiscal recklessness leading to the crash of the Ghana City, which is currently the worst performing currency in the world. Mr. Chairman, the reason why our currency is depreciating at such a rapid rate has to do with the debt overhang to the levels that our debt has now become unsustainable and investors are panicking, smelling the possibility of debt default. Obviously because of how the fiscal has been managed over the years. Mr. Chairman, clearly, clearly, from the slide that I show you, we are seeing that Ghana's fiscal path since 2018 is the worst among 46 Sub-Saharan African countries. So if you are to compare the fiscal path of Ghana in the last four years, we happen to be the worst in the entire Sub-Saharan African region. Forty-six countries, if you compare it. And I will show you what has happened to our fiscal since 2017. I'm on record to have commended the Minister of Finance publicly in parliament and the Hansard Best May Hour that in the year 2017, they did so well on the fiscal by staying true to the fiscal consolidation. But you see, they lost the way from the year 2018 when this below the line and above the line started. At that point, Ghanaians and major stakeholders felt that honestly, Ghana economy is doing well whilst in actual fact, we're not doing well. Because people often look at the fiscal deficit as the path, the fiscal path, and draw conclusions that they are adding to the debt based on the fiscal path. But unfortunately, because the overall balance was understated, people were not paying attention and others are asking us of how did we get here? And I've always said that we got here because the fiscal has been understated over the years and that is why we're not paying attention. And you could see that from 2018 that we did over 7%, 2019 over 7%, 2020 during COVID, we did 17.2% of GDP, the highest in the sub-region. And then apart from Seychelles, that did 18%. Almost every other person, uh, uh, every other country, we, 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 we spent far more than them. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, let me take you to what countries did. And this is the 46 African countries that, um, have gone through.
Before you do, before you do, I'm looking at the five again. I would have thought that your emphasis was on the crash of the Ghana City, is that it? Look at the fight.
I, I am, I am making a point. Can I, I first of all talk of the fiscal recklessness?
Leading to, leading to.
Leading to the crash. So I have to, I have to make the point on the fiscal recklessness as the reason why there was a crash. So, for example, I've listed here the 46 African countries. And you will notice that, you will notice that Ghana has, um, run fiscal deficit in excess of 50% over four years. Over four years since 2017. In fact, 2017, we did well. So since 2018. So 2018, Mr. Chairman, you noticed that Ghana happened to, our fiscal deficit was higher than most countries, 2018, 2019, 2020. In the year 2020, and this, this, this data is coming from World Bank.
Yeah, what I.
This data is coming from World Bank. I pick it from the website of the World Bank. World Bank, yes, from, from the webs- website of the World Bank, the African Report. The African Report from the World Bank website. So in the year 2020, you could see that apart from Seychelles, almost every country, in fact, in the sub-region, no country did fiscal deficit above 7%. In the entire Africa, Ghana was the second highest apart from Seychelles. Seychelles did 18% of GDP in fiscal deficit. By the previous year, their fiscal deficit was 0.9% of GDP. And then the year before, in the year 2018, their fiscal deficit was 0.2% of GDP. However, in the year after, the year 2021.
Attempting to disrupt your train of thought, keep focus, please. I don't want to, even though I've said that I'll be happy if you are derailed, but keep focus. Um, when you talk about the physicals and the fiscal deficit and all of that, let me, let me understand my elementary conception of this matters. This, this result from what expenditure?
It's, it's high expenditure.
High expenditure.
High expenditure.
To do the roads, to do the water, the railways.
Whatever, whatever the expenditure is.
Flyover, what is the name? Uh, remind me, those who know the flyover.
Honorable Katie, Honorable Katie.
No, no, let me understand, is that what we're talking about?
This is macro. I'm, I'm talking of high level expenditure numbers. If you, if you spend more than your means, you crash.
But it's for those things, is that it?
I, I don't know what it is for, but I'm giving you the headline, the expenditure levels. I don't know what is it for. So, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, I, I, I thought when you were outlining the list, you add the National Cathedral, the SDI Secretariat, NABCO Secretariat, the bloated government, uh, and then corruption is all part of it, the Audit General's report. So it's a, it's a tall list.
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you, you, you. Mr. Chairman, first, numbers and, um, what this means to every economy. And if your fiscal path is not sustainable, you eventually find yourself in a debt trap. Unfortunately, Ghana's program today is debt trap. We have confronted ourselves with unsustainable debt due to the fiscal path we have created since 2018. And that is what I'm trying to, uh, explain. Mr. Chairman, every single country in the list that have provided, 46 Sub-Saharan African country, if you look at the path, Ghana is the worst. In the year 2018, in the year 2020 in particular, when Ghana had to see an election and obviously also confront with COVID, we overspent our budget in excess of 17% of GDP. One would have thought that as soon as you find yourself in such a situation, you will decline in terms of subsequent year, you have to do fiscal consolidation to catch up. Unfortunately, in the year 2021, instead of us to go through fiscal consolidation, we saw a government that still want to continue with the path of fiscal recklessness, fiscal populism by creating additional expenditure. And you can see that Seychelles, that actually saw a fiscal deficit of very 18%. The subsequent year, they reduced their deficit by 7%.
Put it on the, everybody is listening, the whole of Ghana is listening. Why not put in the layman's step? Because even some of us are struggling. So why not put it in layman's step? Listen, instead of the government cutting down on development of infrastructure, there was a government still insists on building roads, building this, doing this.
No, no, don't worry, don't worry, don't, don't worry. Instead of government, instead of government cutting down on frivolous expenditure such as National Cathedral and the size of government, they decided to go on overdrive.
Their luxury chartered jet travels. Is the chairman inviting us to provide a list of the reckless expenditure?
I'm not listening to my co-chair on this. He's trying to advise me on the point. I'm not taking. But one second, yeah, yeah, no, no. No, no, he would, no, no, talking is a co-chair, he can always come in. In the scheme of things, I don't know much about the cathedral, but in the scheme of things, I don't think, when you talk about big items that you are talking about, you, you, you are trivializing your own argument. Because I think in the, 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 the scheme of things, this doesn't. But anyway, the point I make is that you're talking about.
The cathedral is worth 400 million dollars, Mr. Chairman, for the record.
On the provisions that have identified, put it that way so the ordinary Ghanaian understands what we are talking about.
So Katie, I, I think I've made my point. We, we, we happen to be the worst among 46 countries in the sub-region in terms of the fiscal path in the last four years.
If there are no questions, we can go to the six.
And that is the reason why we are where we are.
Oh, okay, that's good. So this is fairly short. Uh, if there are no questions, any questions? Yeah, look.
Thank you very much, Co-Chair. I think just following your train of thought, would it be possible for the committee to be providing documents regarding certain expenditure that you are referring to? You made reference, you've made reference to the cathedral, you made reference to a few other, yes.
Uh, my, my colleague, the Honorable Okujeto is the MP for the cathedral and I'm sure he will, he will be, he will do justice for that.
Oh, Chairman, the honorable ranking member has, has, has reduced my stature. I want him to add chartered jets as well, not only National Cathedral, but chartered luxury jet travels. It's also my area of expertise.
So, so I'm, 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 I'm sure the good people of Nocton will not accept. No, no, Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Samokujeto, I, I think that you are disrupting the, the flow of evidence to the committee. Honorable Zenato.
Yes, so Chairman, before he continues to the six, just for the record of this committee, the Honorable Atu Fosun is leading evidence that there is a strong nexus between your fiscal policy, your monetary policy and the strength of your currency. And that if you do not manage your fiscal well, as has not been managed well by the Minister for Finance, that's why interest rate is going high and that is why the depreciation of the city is going high. So for the record, we are saying that fiscal irresponsibility and justified liesize of government and its associated expenditure have contributed to this fiscal slippages, which is affecting the performance of the economy. Thank you, Chair.
Well, no, Co-Chair, one second. I wrote, we heard all of that. What we didn't hear though was any reference to the COVID and to the crash in the international world. We didn't hear about the rise of the dollar. We didn't hear anything about, of that nature. Who wouldn't allow you?
You allow me to take my point. You have been interjecting me every second.
To make sure that you have a free flow. What's your problem? You have all the time. If you want to start again, I asked you specifically, are you done with the five? You said yes.
No, because you keep interjecting me.
Atu, since when did you become kind of unsure about me?
I know because you are.
Yeah, so uncle talks, you chat, I presented, yeah. Yeah, so.
So, Honorable Katie. Honorable members, uh, is your question answered? The Honorable Dr. Zenato Rollins.
I just wanted confirmation of the fact that he can furnish the committee with the relevant documents to buttress his point on the issue of financial recklessness.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Co-Chair made reference to, I'm, I'm not done.
I thought she had finished, sorry.
And the, the co-chair made reference to infrastructure and mentioned roads and hospitals and witches. Was it, was it off record?
That wasn't off record.
Was it off record? No. Yes, all I'm trying to do is to have some clarity on specifically what he's referring to because we need more specifics to be able to make an informed decision and report back to the plenary.
Okay, Honorable Animadu.
Counsel, because I thought he had some objection, objection or something from counsel.
Yes, um, Mrs. Chairman, I think this is the very issue that I was referring to. We are now being invited to ask the proponents to provide more documents. And I think we need to be extremely careful about this. That's, that's all. Thanks.
We, we would define the nature of the documents that we are asking for, we'll try and define it.
As they make reference to documents and tender them, we'll make sure that mandatorily, they will be made available to you. I took note of a World Bank report, Africa report, which is not, you know, on the, on the list here. So, um, you do well to tender that document to the committee. Yes. Honorable Animadu and then Honorable Ahefou.
I may associate myself with the question that Dr. Zenato asked. And I would want to draw the proponents' attention to what, how paragraph five is couched. Fiscal recklessness leading to the crash of the city. And I would want to support what she had requested for, that if you can get a detailed expenditure which would lead or point to the committee that the ministry was reckless. Thank you.
Very well, Honorable Atu Fosun.
Chairman, you know, before Atu Fosun came, you know, this morning when I arrived, Chairman, I shared a proverb with you and Honorable Animadu. I said, if you are pounding fufu for a blind man, the best way to assure the blind man that you are not eating the fufu is to be whistling. You have to be whistling whilst you are pounding. Is the city crash or not crash? We have done our whistling.
Mr. Chairman, he's overruled. So who, who had the, who, who had?
Yes, so he's, yes, they will provide the documents, the, the figures, the specific expenditure.
Yes. Honorable.
They, no, they, they're specific expenses. For instance, for instance, the Honorable Minority Leader earlier on tendered a warrant in respect of the cathedral, that's an expense.
Yes.
And, and that, that, that is where part of what build up to the expenditure that you are referring to, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. So it, that is the nature of the evidence that would, uh, want you to tender before the committee.
Mr. Chairman, when you say, when you say fiscal recklessness, I mean, it looks as if members are trivializing the issue to just the expenditure. The chairman, fiscal management is a combination of revenue, expenditure, non-tax revenue and financing.
I prefer, I prefer that we're mindful of our diction. When you say that, we're trivializing.
No, no, because we, we, okay, I redraw that, I redraw that uncle, I redraw that, um, I redraw that then. But we don't need to just concentrate on one leg of fiscal management. My point, my point is that when you run fiscal deficit. four years in a row amounting to fifty-six percent of your GDP, higher than Sub-Saharan African average. In fact, no country among the forty-six African countries has run that kind of large fiscal deficit. In quote, you have increased your debt by that magnitude.
Well, you made a point.
So therefore, so therefore, so therefore, you don't overspend above your means. If you're a young person, you start life and you don't have money, you're spending above your means. That's right.
If there are no questions.
Yeah, Co-Chairs, thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. By ground five, it is categorically stated that Ghana City has crashed as a result of recklessness and is the worst performing currency in the world. You have been a deputy finance minister during your tenure of office in 2016 with particular reference to the exchange rate, CD to dollar. How much was the rate? And now, what is the exchange rate?
Thank you very much. The, the Ghana CD at the time we were leaving office in 2018 at the Central Bank was three point nine to one CD in 2016. In the market is four point one, some places four point two. Today, 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 and this is public knowledge, you can get it from the internet, Interbank. Today, in the Interbank, the CD to the dollar is about fifteen CDs, four point eight, fourteen point eight, fifteen CDs depending. The CD has depreciated year to date in the last ten months.
Atu, hold on, hold on, my colleague, I think we're getting a bit unsure about this. The question was asked whether there was an interjection, whether he, he is cross as that or something. And then we asked our question for clarification. Maybe this, he's happy, he thinks I've come to his age. Now you, you say that, well, why, why Solomon, isn't it? As I see you laughing, you know, because I've helped you out. Yeah, I don't think he's under, under ideal responsibility to be kind of answering this sort of question. If we ask for clarification, that is fair. But pointedly, during your time, this is on time, well, it's for now, he's not a finance minister and he's not, he's not under any sense of motion, you know. So let's be conscious about the question that, well, maybe, maybe, maybe we overrule that one, yes.
He has answered the question already.
Halfway through it, it's overruled, so.
You don't let me start a question and in between you truncate me. Listeners will not appreciate the point I'm making.
I thought I should overrule it, it's overruled, yeah. So you are, that answer is a sponge, yes, another question. Thank you, who else?
Chairman, I hear the ranking member list forty-six countries which have performed better than Ghana. I want to find out from him whether any of these countries that he listed, their finance minister had to deal with energy sector debts that he inherited when they came into office to manage the affairs of their various countries. I want to know from him whether any of the forty-six countries that is listed had to deal with this huge energy sector debts in those countries.
So of those countries didn't inherit Esla, which provided buffer for them to deal with some of the energy sector debt, which Esla Energy Sector Levy have even collateralized up to 2035. But I would like to respond to the other issues, thank you, Chair.
Some of these countries are at war, war to the level of they have to buy huge ammunitions and their revenue base has derailed, yet they perform better than Ghana. So, Mr. Chairman, you, you, it would be wrong for you to zero in into one, one item and conclude. If you are to take critical look at these countries, Ghana is far better off than most of these countries that we made reference to in terms of all the economy issues indicators and everything, yet we performed worse than them. So his arguments, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree with him because we cannot be a country that is performing worse than a war-torn country.
Isn't it also part of a reflection of their economies, in the level of development in their respective countries, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, that is why it is wrong for one person to isolate one expenditure. Under the previous administration, we had to contend with single spine. We did not treat it below the line. We contend with a major expenditure, single spine, that the previous administration inherited from then-President Kufua's government. Yet it was contained and paid for and accounted for appropriately. We had to contend with Dumso, we had to contend with that and did a major, major investment in Dumso, we did not treat it below the line. So that is not an issue. That did not, that did not resolve the issue. So, 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 Mr. Chairman, even the energy payment.
Otherwise, when the chairman is talking, you wouldn't let me come.
No, because, because I'm speaking, you, you have not asked me to stop. No, just ask me to stop and I will stop.
So stop.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I have also stopped, so.
He said I used only one example, let me give him another example. Can you tell us any of these forty-six countries that their finance minister had to expend huge sums of money to clean their banking sector? Any one, just one.
I, I prefer that you, you put it as a suggestion, that isn't the case that quite a lot of this also went into the cleaning of the system.
I'll be, I'll be guided accordingly, Chairman, very well, very well. And, and, and lastly, Chairman, I'm sure that the ranking member of the Finance Committee is very much familiar with the Public Financial Management Act, Act 921, proponent of the motion. And if, if I may refer him to section twenty-two of the Public Financial Management Act. Because I heard him say that the fiscal management relates to revenue, expenditure and financing. Okay, refer to section twenty-two, approval of annual budgets by Parliament. Twenty-two one, Parliament shall, by the thirty-first of December of each financial year, consider and approve, A, the annual budget and the correlative work plan of the Government of Ghana for the ensuing financial year. B, the appropriation bill. And C, any other bill that may be required to implement the annual budget. Twenty-two two, the annual budget approved by Parliament takes effect from the first day of January of the ensuing year. Now, having quoted the provision in the law, I want to find out whether the Parliament of the Republic of Ghana in December of 2021 complied with the provisions of this act. And if the Parliament did not comply, would you not agree with me that the failure of the Parliament of Ghana to comply with the provisions of the law has contributed to the fiscal situation that we find ourselves in as a country? Thank you.
Parliament of Ghana, if you remember.
Yes.
Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Member, with respect, I think that the question should be overruled. And I say this because the Constitution clearly entrenches the concept of separation of powers. The executive branch of government has its functions clearly stated in the Constitution. The Minister of Finance exercises management of the financial resources of this country on behalf of the President, who under Article fifty-eight is a receptacle of all executive authority. If that authority resolves in any situation of mismanagement, of any, I mean, in any situation of fiscal recklessness, the executive branch must take the responsibility. In fact, it is not for nothing that the drafters of the Constitution provided in Article eighty-two, four of the Constitution, that ministers can be, I mean, censured. If we took the logic of your question to its conclusion, then it means that this exercise, this, what we are doing today is an exercise in futility, but it is not.
Not entirely, it seems to be suggesting that Parliament may be a contributory factor in all that. Chairman, we've taken note, if it's indicting Parliament, if it's indicting Parliament, let it be. We are individual members of Parliament who have shared our view with you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you permit me, I mean, the point that I'm making is this. The provisions of the Public Financial Management Law is clear. Section twenty-two imposes a duty on Parliament to perform three actions by a certain date. Parliament indeed approved the annual budget and correlative work plan of government for 2022.
Honorable, 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 Honorable Member, Honorable Member. With all, with all, with all due, with all due respect, your question, your question is overruled.
Provision that we all are living witnesses to.
Please take a cue from the Chair, your question is overruled. The witness is not going to answer that question, yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'm, Hansard is my witness, I've raised this issue of.
The question is overruled.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed with your evidence, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will move on, I'll move on to the next item.
Wait, wait, wait.
The banking sector that I did not answer, so if I can answer that and move on.
Which one is?
No, he, he raised an issue whether these countries in question, the forty-six African countries, had to contend with the banking sector cleanup.
No, I think we resolved that.
No, no, it was a question, Chairman, it's important I answer.
I rephrase it, and then he said he was guided by that, and I think we.
So, so I shouldn't answer? It's important I answer?
Answer to the, he says it's fine. Any other questions? Yes, Sammy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, I will be relying on the special audit conducted by the Auditor General presented to this House last week, special audit report on the recoveries made from.
You're not going to allow staff to come from the Magicians, whatever. Let's fiscal, what is, what is this document?
Special audit, I'm using it to ask a question.
No, no, where is it, where is it on this?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not intended in evidence.
People can be pulling stuff from wherever and then be asking questions.
No, 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 Chair, no, no. No, Chair, my, I just want you to know that my question has, has basis.
I didn't think, I didn't have basis in there.
Proceeding from a report.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think we're getting enough of this. One, two, three, up to seventeen, and then we added a few more to this. Council, we added one, so that will be eighteen. He has this freshly minted stuff from wherever it was pulled out from, and he's going to add to that. So if you want to stick to the documents that we have here, he actually hasn't referred to this. Atu, did you refer to this particular document? You haven't seen it in your life.
Yeah, but, but Honorable Katie, I mean, Honorable Chair.
Who would agree to, Katie, it's fine.
Yes, I think that, I think that members, members are entitled as of right to refer to public documents in order to ask follow-up questions. You know, so he referred to the Joy FM in, in, as a predicate for his question on the, the reaction of the IMF. And he didn't even tender it, you know, and it was not overruled. Council, you were happy with that, you want to object to this one?
Well, I.
We don't need to put you, we don't need to put you on the spot.
If the question, if the question that is about to ask.
Council, hold, hold your breath for a minute, hold your breath, put your thing, put your thing. You can ask your question without reference to this, can't you?
So Chairman, I need to understand that moving forward, members cannot, cannot ask questions because the Honorable Messer was the first to introduce a material, a foreign material, not on the list.
We are not going to do that again, so this is the first casualty of that decision.
I, I, I hope Chairman is not being biased and unfair. But the question really can still be asked without, without that document. The matter relating to fiscal recklessness. Will you classify clear cases of wastage? The Auditor General has just retrieved 2.2 billion from wrong pockets. Will you say that those infractions, irregularities, wastage, morfeasance is part of the fiscal recklessness that you are referring to? I just want to be clear.
I, I think you have a very important point out there. When we say fiscal recklessness, frivolous expenditures are part of the recklessness. Obviously, wastage in the system is part of the recklessness and morfeasance. I mean, things that can be avoided. Some of the reports, when you read them, you ask yourself what is happening here. So if you have all of this money going down the drain, in the end, it's the taxpayer who have to pick the liability and pay either through taxes or through other means. So it's part of the problem. Fiscal recklessness, I'm only looking at the high-level numbers. How come we have spent so much as a percentage to our GDP or above our tax revenue or total revenue? That for me, I think is something that we have to immediately flag it if we had known that this is the level of the, the fiscal deficit that we accumulate. For example, for example, when government had to go through the, the financial sector cleanup, the way and manner it was done obviously amount to recklessness. Because you cannot go to the bond market and borrow euro bond just to collapse a bank. You don't do that. Because when you use this kind of euro bond money for this kind of expenditure, when the time comes for payout, you have difficulty in paying. When we say fiscal recklessness, it's wastage, is the way and manner the fiscal is accounted for and the high level of the fiscal. Obviously, if it was high enough and they were aware, they would have taken position to decline. And that is why I made the word fiscal recklessness.
Okay, Council for the Finance Minister, he has his hand up. Is it in relation to the question?
I, we just need clarity on the question because he specifically said the Auditor General has retrieved. So I, I really want us to understand what he means. How does he situate fiscal recklessness in a situation where he's saying the Auditor General has retrieved? We just want clarity on that.
Okay, so, okay. Since, Council, since you are not a part of this process, what I would advise is that you can raise technical legal objections to what is happening. But in terms of asking for substantive clarity of questions that have been asked, you do not have the right before this committee.
I don't understand, I don't understand, why can't you?
No, because, because Honorable Co-Chair, with all due respect, the Honorable Finance Minister will have a turn at this table. And if he does, he will now have the opportunity to make, to make.
It's a question he would have to contend with. And if he doesn't understand through his counsel, you mean they couldn't see clarification?
Yes, that is what I'm, that's what I'm saying. What, no, 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 what, no, I, 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 I think, I think, I think we. No counsel has been, no question has been.
I think he's agreed that we can, we can clarify, clarify.
Yeah, Chair, I can, I can, I can happily clarify. The Auditor, the Auditor General is reporting that they have set out to retrieve 4.7 billion.
Which report are you referring to?
4.7 billion, the report you don't want me to refer to, so.
But so why would you refer to a report I don't want you to refer?
Fiscal recklessness.
Yeah, sure, so without reference to this.
And my, and my question, Chair, you know that I, I can never be intimidated.
I never intend to intimidate, they're not tongue. That's true, I don't intend to, so. Must make your point without reference to this.
So, so, so the question is very clear in my mind. Wastage, morfeasance, financial irregularities. The Auditor General is in pursuit of 4.7 billion. He's retrieved 2.2 billion, 2.5 billion remain out there that he's, he's in search of. And I just wanted to find out if that is part of fiscal recklessness, the fiscal recklessness that you speak of. Does it include morfeasance, corruption, you know, public funds? Does it include morfeasance, corruption, you know, public funds in wrong pockets? That's, that's my question.
Sammy, thank you very much. I, I think it's a fact that if we say fiscal recklessness, it concludes all of that. The key question here is, are those recklessness done only at the Ministry of Finance? I do not believe it. I think it is the economy-wide, it's the government-wide, and most Ministers of Finance are corporate. You can't blame only the minister responsible for finance. But, but the PFM Act empowers the minister responsible for finance to deal with it, and that is why the PFM Act makes more or less the Minister of Finance the most powerful minister. So he, he's clothed with all the necessary legal framework to confront his colleagues. So if he fails to do that, obviously he has engaged in fiscal recklessness.
So, so wait a minute.
That should be.
Wait a minute. And wait a minute, so he's not here because he's caused all this mess, but because he hasn't really held those people, he hasn't imprisoned quite a lot of those people responsible? Is that the point you are making?
The, the fiscal powers is vested in the Finance Minister.
So is, is effectively being held to account for.
Of course, if, if the Minister of Roads overspent and the Minister of Finance pays, it is the responsibility of the Minister of Finance, even though the act was committed by the Minister of Roads. Because the PFM Act empowers that only the Minister of Finance that can give their financial clearance for the minister to engage in that act. So whether, and if the minister fails to do that, the Minister of Finance can deal with him.
It isn't the minister who is responsible for this, it's the whole economy, the whole, the gaboodle of it that makes, makes this whole thing what it is.
Well, well, except that, as a Chairman, if, if you had allowed me to reference that report, I'd pay thirty-five. You see that the Minister of Finance has a 1.6 billion CD question to answer there.
You have another question?
So the Finance Minister is not particularly exonerated in the, in the, in the matter. Yes, I, I have another question.
Let me make this point.
So I think let's make some progress.
I have not exonerated the Minister of Finance. I've said he has all the powers under the PFM Act to confront it when it happens. His failure will mean that he has to carry the cross.
Yeah, my final question, Chair, on the ground five. The Honorable Ranking Member of Finance made reference to using bonds for the financial sector cleanup. My perspective is quite different. I want to find out in terms of the policy choices that were available to the Finance Minister and to the government, the route they chose, was that what was in the national interest so far as fiscal management of the economy is concerned? The, the policy choice, that route which cost us, I don't know, the figures keep changing in this House. I don't know if it's 25 billion or whatever, whatever it is now. What do you have to say about those policy choices so far as fiscal recklessness is concerned?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I think.
The Honorable Ato Fosun does not run the Finance Ministry.
For him to be able to answer this policy-related question, I strongly believe that.
Any views?
Policy choices, policy choices. We are discussing fiscal recklessness.
Chairman, I have a strong view on the way and manner.
What you did six years ago, which would have altered the situation.
The financial sector cleanup was conducted. I have a strong view on that. The Chairman, countries, countries, countries had to contend with banking sector issues. There have been best practices on how the financial sector cleanup could have been managed. In the UK, they had to go through similar, when Royal Bank of Scotland and Lloyds Bank had to be bailed out. In the end, they paid back. Ghana decided to go on a route where the burden on the banking sector cleanup was transferred to the taxpayer. I think that was wrong. I think that Ghana could have decided to go for other ways in dealing with the banking sector issues instead of what they did. That was a policy, wrong policy choice.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Ahto.
Honorable Atto, you said you do not borrow money for banking sector cleanup. How does this amount to recklessness on part of the Finance Minister?
If I'm the Minister of Finance, there's no way I was going to borrow money to collapse a bank. I wouldn't do that. So that is recklessness.
No, no, yeah, that, that is his answer, that's a witness's answer. So Honorable Ahto, do you have a question or Honorable Emadu? Okay.
Let me, let me, let me do my last one, then we decide on the next one. I, I, I thought, Sammy, you were talking about bonds and all the other thing. He himself was talking about bonds and other things. I, that's right, raising the, Atto, was ever any bonds raised in the year 2015? Harud, why are you laughing? Don't anticipate me. 2015, which raised about 1 billion for the country, 1 billion dollars, recall that, 2015? Some, some bonds were raised in the.
Of course.
2015, you recall that? I, and it's the case that your interest on it was about 10.75%? Harud, why do you keep on laughing? Coupon, coupon, I heard it. Uh, that, 10.75, is that it?
Correct.
And it is suggested as the most expensive whatever which was ever raised in the country. Is there anything to it?
I disagree.
Okay, but you know what I'm talking about?
I disagree, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Okay, when there was World Bank guarantee of 400 billion, and then there was the interest payment of 750 million.
That is why I said I disagree.
And you were still having to pay 1 billion, which is all what the Finance Minister has had to be paying, which has led to the figures that you identified out there. You disagree with everything?
Mr. Chairman, the previous administration.
You disagree with everything, don't you?
I disagree because the previous administration borrowed.
You disagree with everything?
I'm making a point that this administration within four years.
Why not answer my question? You disagree or you don't disagree?
I disagree with you, and I'm, I'm giving you further and better particular.
I'm not interested in your further.
You will have to need it, you will need it, because this administration within a period of four years had borrowed from the euro bond market in excess of 12 billion US dollars, as against the previous administration that borrowed 4 billion US dollars. So, so we are talking of how reckless it is, and that's why I have to give you those information.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't the quantum. My interest wasn't the quantum, the 1 billion, I wouldn't have thought so significant in terms of the figures. I'm talking about the, what you call the coupon rate, you have 7.5% return on that and all the World Bank guarantees and all of that. That's what I'm talking about.
So can I explain that?
No, you can't, you.
It, it will.
He answered my question. He said, he said he disagrees.
No, no, it will be, it will be grossly unfair to curtail his answer.
All right.
I think it's important because you are comparing.
I will allow you, go on, let me hear you.
Mr. Chairman, bond prices depend on the time of issuance, and there are so many factors that account for bond prices. If you want to compare bond prices, obviously you have to look at the real interest, how much you are paying. For example, recently, government had to issue zero coupon bond. And the question you have to ask yourselves, what is the real interest rate of the, uh, rare coupon of the zero coupon bond? Simple put, I borrowed today, I get paid all my interest, and tomorrow, when the time comes, I will end up paying only the, the principal. What is the real interest? I think it is more expensive than the 2015 bond, and that is my answer.
And Chairman, just, just there on the banking sector, the Honorable Atto Fosun and the proponents of the motion were strongly arguing that there is an opportunity costs to an expenditure of 23 billion for a banking sector cleanup. If you recall, the Association of Bankers called on Excellency President Nana Dudanka at that time and said that some interjection of some liquidity, of some amount, not exceeding 1 billion. Even at that time, and we'll tender it again tomorrow, Daily Graphic reported this in their front page. They said if we go 500 million, you could save a number of these banks. Now, you said no categorical, that you would not help them with any liquidity intervention. You end up spending 23 billion in a cleanup, where they said that many of them, if they got a certain modicum of support from government, so instead of spending 23 billion and people have gone home, comfortable with people's savings and investment, that must be of concern to you, Chairman, that you refuse to support those who are in need. Don't forget the families who have died as a result of they being asked to go home because once a bank is not working, mother and child, wife and husband in crisis. So you refuse 500 million, 1 billion to save the life of some of these financial institutions, and you are happily saying that we should celebrate you after spending 23 billion, which you are not prepared to report. That's, that's what he's, he's emphasizing on, because this was below the line. So if you left a banking sector expenditure of 23 billion, who should bear the brand for it? Same public, same taxpayer. Those are the contradictions we are pointing out to. Thank you. We'll come back to the banking thing. Let me, Atto, for sake of completeness, just recite out the nature of the point at half. Honorable Chair?
Yeah, Chair, I raise this point of order, so we will be guided. I thought that the proponents are to make out their case, and we will give an opportunity, fair opportunity, to the Honorable Finance Minister to respond. And that the tenure of the Honorable Atto Fosun, when he was Deputy Finance Minister, is not what is, what, 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 yeah, but, but the quest, but continuously, the question is coming up about bonds he raised, it's, it's as though he is under scrutiny.
Yeah, for example, the question of the bond that I'm raising, not particularly about his tenure of office, but the fact that a particular bond of this nature was raised in the country. It just coincides that that was at a time when he was in office. Well, in 2015, so if it happens to be the case that he was in office at that time, so be it. But, but I'm not putting it to him that he's done anything wrong or anything. I'm asking for clarification. Indeed, I was going to do further clarification. I have the Chairman talking, you don't debate with the Chairman. Block his light, block the light so that he's not able to speak. Atto, Atto, let's just, Atto, listen, this is what I was going to say. See, it is, it is here, it is some message at the fact for whatever. That's all right. Chairman, Chairman have some, Chairman have some liberties, you know. One of the most outrageous bonds out there must be a 1 billion lent to, 1 billion dollars, lent to Ghana in 2015 at 10.75 interest, owed 400 million guarantee from the World Bank. A buyer of the bond in 2015 is already guaranteed to get 1.15 billion, and they are still owed 1 billion and 860 million of interest payment. A simple matter of you, you understand this better than I do. You know about this, and whether it makes sense or doesn't make sense.
Mr. Chairman, the person who sent.
Can all of you calm down, to go on?
The person who sent the tweet, did a follow-up tweet the next day, and I, I thought you can read that one as well. Yes, on, on the same thing, so the same person. This is a tweet.
Funny, now your uncle's glasses sees just one point, he doesn't see the other one, you know, so, yes. So what is your comment on, what is your comment on this one?
My answer is that there's a follow-up tweet by the same person.
I'll have a look at.
If you can read it, it will clarify your position.
I'll try and read.
Yes.
Very well, Honorable Ahto, you have your hand up.
Chairman, Co-Chairman, my, my issue is that what is good for Peter is good for Paul.
That, that is not always true.
I asked a question based on 2016 exchange rate figures as compared to the exchange rate now. Chairman overrule this particular question, so I least expect my Chairman to go contrary to his own rules.
We don't play the same rules, we don't play by the same rules. Chairman have your own rules and the members have your own rules.
No, the rules are the same. So Chairman, I spawned, I spawned that from your own record.
Uh, Council, are you there brave?
To, to actually buttress his point, the reference that Okudjua Blacko was making in the Auditor's report.
Blocked by Chairman.
Blocked by, I, I believe that if we are to do our job properly and members of Parliament are asking questions and making reference to documents that are within the public domain, they should be permitted.
When we get to the floor, when we get to the floor, he would have it. I keep it, he will get to the floor.
Chairman, no, on the official records, it must show that the reference that he made to the document, because you are making reference to something we don't know. You said Chairman allowed.
Yeah, sure.
Japal also made, made mention to something online. This is a, a document that is an official document presented to the House.
Appreciate the point you make. Consistently, lawyers of the Finance Minister are complaining that, see originally when they came, we almost aborted this, and sanity broke out, and we decided to go by the way we are going. They were saying that we should restrict them to the particular documentation, which were going to buttress the charges that you had made, which for me made a lot of sense, but in the end it looked like it was getting a bit difficult. So we decided that we weren't going to allow all of us open range to just reading this, bring this document, bring document. We listed about seventeen of the documents, suddenly he pulls one out of his hat.
Chairman, that is for the proponents of the motion, but if members are questioning certain things and can make reference to documents.
One will come back to do the other ones, I'll give you the document and you can raise it.
You must, you must, you must indicate whether it's being allowed or not because for the record, the counsel of the, the Minister raised the question about where the document, the information Sammy was referring to was from, and it's from a document that you are refusing to allow as evidence.
Yeah.
I'm not changing my mind on this one, so.
Yeah, with, with all due respect, Co-Chairman.
But Chairman, Chairman, don't get involved in this, Co-Chairman, don't get involved.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's important, especially.
With the, the, the five, we, we had six.
We need, yes.
We had six and seven. Let's make a decision.
Honorable, honorable members, we may have, we may have to take a vote on the issue, whether and the extent to which we can rely on public documents, you know. Well, let's, let's see, let's see, let's see how, or.
Your license, your license.
Okay, the Honorable Harun Adusu, you have, you have a, your hand up.
Chairman, I wanted to do a quick one on three, and it's on item three, because.
We're going back to three?
Yes.
We're wondering what to do with the six and seven?
No, he will conclude on that. Three is very straightforward, I'll deal with it. Illegal payment of oil revenues in twelve-shore accounts in flagrant violation of Article 176 of the 1992 Constitution.
Why do you think that's going to be fairly short? Let's decide on what to do.
I'm the one giving the evidence, and I'm sure you do that, it's a short evidence.
There's this suggestion that we may want to go for break or whatever. We had thought that, wait a minute, wait a minute. We had thought that the only items outstanding were the six and seven. If you add that one to it, we're going to have three more items. What is the sense of the committee?
There is this hundred million dollar.
Sorry?
Standing in Jubilee holding, which was not paid into the.
We can do twenty minutes for the remaining two.
Against section three of the PRM.
See, I'm talking and he's not listening, and he's going on and on and on and on and on. The three and then the other ones.
The Honorable Atto Fosun, are you suggesting that you can do the three and the remaining ones in twenty minutes? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I indicated my job is to take you through item four, five, six, and seven. So far I've done four and five, six and seven, I can lump them together and give you one.
We are here in medical conditions why people should have break, so let's take a decision. Is there, is there a sense of the committee that we break for one hour and come back at four o'clock? Sorry, let's get it right. I can see through. Two hours?
One hour is okay. Honorable Manolli, I crave your indulgence.
He was saying that we could finish it in twenty minutes, but there are those who said that they need to get break. But there are those who said that they need to get break.
Yes, very well, very well. Thank you very much. Council, we crave your indulgence. At four o'clock, the committee will resume sitting. So, Honorable Members, the committee will adjourn for one hour and to return at four o'clock PM in the forenoon.